About the business of the coming, we ask for your wisdom, guidance, and help as we work to accomplish what is fair, what is right, and what is beneficial for our county. Bless all who came here tonight and their loved ones. Give comfort and solace to those recently harmed by the hurricane. Bless our country, our state, and beautiful Cass County. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Here.
Commissioner Layland?
Present.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Howie?
Present.
Commissioner Barrera?
Present.
Commissioner Marquetti?
Here.
Open the floor for public comment. You have three minutes. Floor is now open. Floor is now closed. Do you have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
I would like to strike number two under Ied presentations, and with that, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion approved and support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passive. Recognitions. Recognition of outstanding service in the My Hope program. Hope, do you have a floor? We can wait if you want.
You could.
Yeah.
Switching with Judge Beal.
We can wait and...
Switching with Judge Beal?
We can do that, yes. If you want.
I would.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
I'll wait for Barbara. I'll kind of push you that. You okay with that, Judge?
Yep.
Don't let me forget.
I'll do my best.
Okay, so I painted out to you, and there's some in the back for people who are here in the audience, our State of the Court report. And then there's just a one-page sheet that has a QR code. So if you want to read it later, you can snap this with your phone or your computer. The benefit to reading it digitally is there are links in the report. So if you want to go to any of the information, that'll make it easier for you to do that instead of having to type things in. So I'm going to quickly just go through our report. It does come for a little longer time period than normally we do, but we just kept having more information to put into it. And then we decided, okay, it's a hard deadline of July of 2024. So there was no rhyme or reason for why we chose that, but we just said we got to stop somewhere and we'll work to the next one. So if you want to look at it later, it is available on the court's website under Court News. And I will email this out tomorrow as well so that you'll have that link. So just wanted to highlight in the report, the court's mission, which is providing fair, just, and timely case processing while ensuring due process of law for the citizens we serve. We've had a mission statement for a while now. It was an understood mission statement even before we had a written one. But you may recall back several years ago when I was court administrator and when Judge Doburch was still here, we worked on a procedural fairness project and identified the words that describe the courts. And it's important to think about these things because by doing that, it helps you have a more cohesive situation with your employees because we have to know what we're all trying to work for. So that's been really important. We've referred back to that. We had calendars made, if you remember, back when we first worked on that project, and we handed them out to people. But we still listen to that. And, you know, I know people think the opposite of lawyers, but really, the most critical skill for the courts is to listen because we're a forum where people are supposed to bring their disputes to, and we're supposed to listen and help them resolve those disputes. So keep that in mind as you review the report. The other thing that we've worked really hard on in the courts is employee initiatives. And we created this little design to kind of visualize. I'm a visual person, so I like to have something to visualize what we think we're supposed to be doing. And so we think that it's the job of the judiciary, the judges, to be able to support our staff and our supervisors, to then allow them to have a positive office culture, positive customer service, so that together, we can all carry out our mission. And that's why the mission is at the top. And to that end, that's why it's become very important for us to do a lot of check-ins with our court staff, to have our supervisors have regular training and support meetings so that they can feel like they've got support amongst one another. One of the initiatives that we felt helped make things more cohesive was Clerk McMichael and I agreeing on an MOU so that we would provide support to the Circuit Court File Room. And so all of our supervisors have monthly meetings where they talk about different topics that they're all experiencing. And that has been, we've gotten really positive feedback on that. Because when you're a supervisor, sometimes you wonder, oh, how would someone else do this? So it's just nice to check in with one another. So we've really focused on that we are one team and that we do have one vision and we have one goal, which is to do the best we can for our citizens as far as delivering justice. I guess this slide got blocked out. I didn't realize. I should have sent it as a PDF. But I just wanted to highlight in the report, as you look at it, we feel very strongly that the courts need to be a strong partner with our community. And so we do a lot of things that are community initiatives. And some of those are just by virtue of our caseload, we, of course, come into contact with members of the community. But as far as other things like Adoption Day, Law Day, Reunification Day, our problem-solving courts, we're trying to make our communities better and better in terms of access to justice, in terms of making a real difference. And to that end, we've had a lot of partnerships with the jail. It was so exciting. We had a meeting last week talking about some things that are going to be happening in terms of taking further the medication-assisted treatment that's in the jail currently. That was an initiative that a lot of time and hard work went into by the sheriff and his people. And it was something that was really important to the courts because, you know, we found that it's really important for people who have addiction issues to get the medication they need both while they're incarcerated and then when they're released, so that when they're released back into the community, they can be more productive and hopefully maintain abstinence and be less trouble for the people that they come into contact with, be a better support to their family, which in turn makes our community better. Also, just other things we do, like the rake a difference with United Way in the fall. There'll be information coming out about that, but we let employees put together a team and go out and rake. That's good for employee morale. It's good for our senior citizens in Cass County. And United Way brings a lot of money in our community. We actually don't raise nearly as much money as we used to for United Way. We used to do a withholding from our pay here in Cass County with the employees. We had an employee campaign. We don't do that any longer. And so I always like to highlight United Way because they bring a lot in. And so it's important for us to give back to and partner with them so that they'll want to continue to partner with us and bring money into our county. Because their office is over in St. Joe, Michigan, and they serve both Buryan and Cass County. And so by partnering in those kinds of projects, it keeps us in their minds. So sometimes when they have extra money, I don't know if you remember me telling you when I was court administrator, we had partnered with them on a project for foster kids, and they ended up having a little extra money that year, and they called and said, do you guys want it? All you have to do is apply for it. And we ended up getting that extra money to buy some extras for our kids in foster care. And that's really important because some of those kids need things, and there is money provided by the state, but it's usually not enough to meet all of their needs. So I just wanted to highlight that. You'll find some great information in our report. So the only other thing I wanted to touch on is you'll see some information about our employees, some of the things they're doing to get certified, get trained, et cetera. We think that's really important because as we talk about the overall compensation and benefit package here, pay is important, but working conditions are important, too. And also feeling like you're able to grow as a person. And training and having those opportunities is really critical. One of the things that we did last year for the first time is we closed for a whole day, and we had an all-day training that all of our staff could attend and have time together with one another. We're going to do that again this year, I believe, in January or February. And we have to get permission from the state to do that. But it's really beneficial because then we don't have to pay for people to drive somewhere. We can actually do it on-site. And it's a great team-building opportunity. So as you know, I think our courts do a great job, but that's because of our people. It's not because of myself or any one person. It's because of our team. So I hope you'll enjoy reading the report. And I just am grateful to be able to share it with you. And I will share it to the 120 North Broadway address tomorrow so that everybody gets it. And also share this little sheet that has a QR code in case you want to pass that on to anybody that has questions about the courts. Any questions?
I have a comment. With my other job, I just want to compliment your staff for the Anna Johnson, the deputy traffic clerk. Me and her work well together, and we have back and forth through email and over the phone. And that's one good department that I work with on a daily basis. That's really, really good.
Thank you.
Really, really good.
I'll pass that on to her.
Yeah, thank you.
We did get this in our packet, and so I think it's very, very nicely done. And I wanted to ask you, did you do this all in-house?
We did.
Oh, gosh, you guys did a great job. There's your second job, Carol, right there.
We utilize, there is a free website called Canva. You can have a paid subscription, but there's a free version. And we utilize that to do a lot of our materials that we generate.
Yeah, it's a great job.
But Sarah Matthews was a big part of this, and so I need to tell her thanks. She's not here tonight, but she's out of the office, but she's great at putting this together.
I'm not surprised you heard that at all.
Yeah, and we had numerous people, I should thank, in the courts who read it and proof read it. So there could still be typos. I'm not claiming there's not. But we had multiple people reviewing it, so hopefully it was informative for you all. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you so much for giving us that chance.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm deeply honored to stand before you today to recognize four exceptional Cass County employees for their outstanding contributions to the My Hope program. This appreciation extends not only from me, but also from the many residents whose lives have been positively impacted by the work that they've done. And as you know, the My Hope program has been a crucial lifeline for many homeowners in Cass County, helping to encourage and facilitate energy-efficiency-focused residential housing repairs and upgrades. Behind the success of this program are dedicated individuals like Chief Deputy Paulette Johnson, foreclosure prevention specialist Tracy Haskins, tax clerk Barbara Cherry Holmes, and tax specialist Thailand who couldn't be with us tonight. Their tireless efforts have made a real difference. Their commitment has not gone unnoticed, and I'm thrilled to be able to show our video tonight that highlights the personal stories of some of these Cass County homeowners who have directly benefited from their hard work and experiences.
I actually had active leaks in my house and had a ceiling coming down. So it was pretty critical.
COVID really bit his heart around here.
I picked up the My Hope program on my phone by accident, and I pursued it and found out that there might be some availability to help retired people like myself and my wife get through some tough times.
Each homeowner was able to receive up to $25,000 for roofs, windows, doors, and energy-efficiency appliances. And for many of our homeowners, this was life-changing.
At the moment, we were having a few issues with our heating not being sufficient enough because of the windows and doors in our home. And after having a specialist come out through My Hope and checking where the leaks were, he come up with some answers, and My Hope was there for me. I surely appreciate it.
In Cass County, more than 70% of our housing stock was built before 1990. So our focus has been on rehabbing this aging housing stock, assisting elderly residents to age in place, assisting our veterans who are in need of energy efficiency improvements, and also making home repairs possible for residents that are on fixed incomes.
I feel that it's extremely important for people to be able to stay in their homes for various reasons. They like their home, it's a family home or historic home. And a lot of times, they can't afford to do this. So I think My Hope program serves the community so well in this.
This was critical for me. I'm retired, and I do have a decent income. I don't qualify for poverty programs because I'm not in poverty. I'm also not rich by any stretch of the imagination. So I have enough money to do a lot of the stuff I have to do. But to come up with $15,000 for a roof is out of the question.
I wanted to mention that we could not do this without the support of many partners. Some of the partners in our community were Helping Hands of Cass County, the Cass County Council on Aging, Midwest Energy and Communications, other subrecipients like the Village of Kissopolis and the City of Duwajak have always been available to answer questions. Local municipalities were fantastic in spreading the word about this program. The Cass County Board of Commissioners, as well as Cass County Admin Department, was very supportive of our program. And also, our local contractors. We've had a great group of contractors, and we're pleased that we're able to keep this funding right here in our community.
Tracy was fantastic to work with, extremely helpful up at the Cass County office.
The ladies administering this were incredibly helpful. They helped walk us through different things. They were very patient with us. They were very kind to us.
Just a big thank you to Hope Anderson and her team for what she does. It's wonderful. She's involved in the community, and our community is going to succeed because of her.
The Michigan State Housing Development Authority, they've been great to work with. They've been consistently providing valuable support and resources to us so that we could achieve these goals.
I'd like to thank My Hope and the state of Michigan.
whatever we needed and whenever we needed it. And their contributions were deeply appreciated. Ladies, your dedication, expertise, and unwavering commitment to helping others has truly embodied the spirit of service that makes our county a better place. On behalf of myself, Cass County, and the residents you've impacted, I want to express my deepest gratitude. It is with great pride that I present these certificates of appreciation to Paulette Johnson, Tracy Haskins, Barbara Cherry Holmes, and Thailand Lee. Your work has been nothing short of remarkable. And we're incredibly fortunate to have you as part of our team. Thank you again for all you do. Okay, let's start off. Tracy, thank you very much. You stay up here. Yes. Oh, yes. Okay. Barbara Cherry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have enough?
Thank you.
Do you have enough?
Thank you.
And then thank the...
Oh, you're right. Give it to Thailand. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you here.
Yeah.
Is that why she's holding her down?
Thank you. You guys want to say anything?
The floor is yours.
You guys have any questions or comments for them? Feel free. We're not done. I mean, we're still have, how many houses in process right now? Probably 10?
I'm kind of all scratched.
Yeah. But we're not done. And as a matter of fact, hot off the press just this week, MISHDA said that we have met every target that they've given, presented to us. We've already gotten $125,000 in high-performing dollars. They allowed us to get more money in high-performers dollars. I've asked for some. There's a deadline, and it would be really hard to do a lot of houses in that deadline. But hopefully, we will be getting another $180,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Thank you, Mary. That was great. Vice Chair Barrera, top that.
I would think the above listed items we voted on at a one-time break roll call bill be considered as the set agenda by the Board of Commissioners.
Second. Motion on the floor, support and discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Howie?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Layland?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yep. Motion passes. Commissioner reports. District one.
The hazardous waste tire collection was fairly successful. Thanks to Chair Jones, Commissioner Marquetti for coming out. Matt was there. I don't think it was quite as busy as what we normally encounter, but we did have a lot of hazardous waste.
That was a lot of stuff.
Chair Jones showed up, and I directed him to go over and help pull cans out of vehicles.
He tricked me.
That's all I had.
All right, thank you, man. Commissioner Lawrence?
Well, the trash day that they had in Wayne Township was very successful as well. So we're going to count on that, more of those in the future. Also, I was talking with the owner of the oil change place downtown there. And he's just purchased that, from what I understand, and he's renovated that. And he's committed to the area of Cass County and the city of Duwajak. He's committed to Duwajak. And his goal is to do all of his, everything that he can do in Duwajak. That is, whatever he needs to purchase, to purchase it in Duwajak, and so on and so forth. And so I was really impressed with him and what he's done with the oil can alley. And I would say, give him a try and see. It was good.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Locke?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Howie?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Barrera?
Filton Township just did some improvements on the facility. It's a very wonderful facility. We are very fortunate to have it, be able to rent it out for events. So I encourage people to come through and take a look at some of the work. And we are looking right now, currently getting the place painted. So there's RFP out to have the facility painted.
All right. Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes. Last Saturday, we had the Edwardsburg Fall Festival, and it was a huge success. And I can tell you that the car parking really was, it was really something because we had over 300 cars, and it was a lot. And also, the used tire electronics and hazardous waste drop-off, as Commissioner Layland said, it went very well. We had over 200 cars. And again, as you mentioned, the hazardous waste drop-off was really very popular. Many thanks to Bob Thompson, Skip Dice, Brent Floria, Jeremiah Jones, Ryan Layland, Babita Owensby, Terry Wyman, Scott Wyman, and Matt Newton. And I hope I didn't miss anybody because they were all, we couldn't have done it without them. The planning commission and NATS both canceled their meetings, but last week, the Board of Public Works met, and that group will have a sewer project with Banks and Lakes and Lakes Area Sewer Authority. So that is good news. Also, our courthouse project is nearing completion, and on Friday, we have a soft opening, and our county employees will get a preview before the grand opening on October 11th. And that's it.
All right. Commissioner Lee?
Nothing at this time.
All right. Administrator's report. You've got 30 seconds. Go.
All right. Main thing, not in the report. The equalization director will be giving the apportionment report. Actually, it's due, with the way the timing lines up, it's going to have to be, we're going to have to hold a special meeting. She said that she was planning to have the report in all commissioner mailboxes by Monday and then email it out as well. The plan was to do a quick special meeting before the next committee of the whole, and she said it'd probably take five to 10 minutes. There's a resolution that has to be passed, and some timing constraints in terms of when we get the information to when it has to be submitted, but we'll take care of that. And I guess to piggyback off of what Roseanne said real quick, it's interesting. We've been talking about the historic courthouse project and getting updates and talking about it for a long time. And it's interesting to think that come next month, we'll probably have one last, maybe little, update on some of the things with moving in, and we'll be all set. It's very exciting times. And then the last thing I guess I'll touch on, ABM. We met with them, I think it was about a week and a half. We met with them, I think it was about a week and a half ago. We've been working with them to try to look at what we might be able to do in terms of energy efficiency, and some of our, you know, HVAC systems, lighting systems, things like that, to find other ways that we might be able to reduce costs, or innovative ways to look at kind of funding future capital projects. I think we all kind of took away from that, that there are some really good paths that we could look at, and some, some good avenues to explore in terms of funding avenues and cost savings. So we're going to have the rep from ABM give a presentation to the Board of Commissioners here coming up, as soon as we can get that worked out, and see if it doesn't make sense to look at moving to the next step.
Thanks, Matt. Any questions for the administrator?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I want to ask about the postage meter.
Yes.
Is the cost of the meter, the capital expenditure, is that?
No, not with that one. That'll actually be, I think it's a lease that's a relatively low amount. It's kind of like with our printers, you know, and those, obviously, we're looking at a much larger scale. But with the postage meters, by the time they're end of life, there's really not a lot of value left with them anyway. So we found the leasing option made the most sense. And actually, the new meters are coming in, I think it's, they're being delivered tomorrow, and then we're looking to try to schedule installation and training for next week. So it's coming really quick. But I think it's going to enable a lot of, a lot of easier options for us. I mean, ours were pretty dated, so this one will have some new features that can maybe result in some cost savings. And we're also looking at our overall mailing system in general, and anticipate some changes coming with that also. Maybe more partnership with postal service, and less reliance on third-party vendors.
Just for clarification, the meters themselves are actually USPS property. The machine is a little bit separate. So, you know, often when we look at it, we just think that's just a mail machine. You asked specifically about the meter. I just wanted to let you know that is USPS, and we have to pay like a rental before that. It's included in our lease for the new machines. But there are some IMI complaints that we had to do this by the end of the year, so.
Yep.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? All right, moving on to county partners. Cory. How much you got on you?
I have a few things.
All right.
All right. So our office did host the MACD Region Eight Conference, or meeting, at Camp Freedenswell. We had over 40, around 40 people there. It was really successful. MACD Director gave an update on their new programming, and they're hoping to offer human resource support to the districts, and some other QuickBooks support, and those kind of things that will definitely help all the districts around the state. And then, surprise visit by John Schweitzer with M-DAR, and he gave a little update on the M-DAR programming with MEEP. The, they're going to be changing the name to, MEEP will go away, in a way. The, they're going to be conservation technicians, and they're still outlining some of the changes in the goals for that program. It'll be very similar, still working with best management practices for agriculture. On the, however, our county will not be given a MEEP technician or a conservation technician this year, because of the changes in the cut, or the static funding that they have to use. They are not replacing all of the vacancies, and we're one of those. And they're going to use that funding to help boost the program in other areas, and hopefully, next year, we will get a conservation technician. In the meantime, the surrounding counties will be supporting the re-averifications and some verifications in our community. I have tools and supplies from our technician that will be available for farmers when they're doing their re-verification. So I'm trying to go through and see what all those are, and make sure they get utilized, you know, out here. So that's the big changes there. We have a hike with the naturalists scheduled for next Tuesday, 10:08 at Dodd Park, 5:30 PM with Meanders and Trout Unlimited. And they'll be giving a little update about some of the changes on the Duwajak River, and the water quality, or the water monitoring equipment that we help to support to be out there. They'll explain how that works in real time, and then also do a little fly fishing demonstration, and you'll be able to learn how to fly fish. So come on out and join us. It should be fun. We, our fiscal year '25 business plan is due to the state on Monday, so if there's any big projects that you want to make sure we address this year, talk to me, so I can see if the other people on the committee will make sure it gets on our plan. The regional ag technician at NRCS has been very busy with a lot of conservation plans, and kudos to them for all the hard work they've had. We do have a new NRCS district administrator who will be starting this month. That's huge, that we're not going to have an opening for a long time. That's not usual. St. Joe County, I just did a support letter for them. They're trying to get an NRCS conservation tech, who is going to work in both Cass County and St. Joe County. And so we did a support letter for that, because we'll be benefiting from that person. They'll be in our office, just like the regional tech, regional, I mean, regenerative ag technician. So we're getting support in agricultural areas, to help make up, I guess, for the MEEP thing. The operations review with M-DAR is tomorrow, and I think we're all set for that. Our budget was passed, and an audit is scheduled for December. I did give Matt a copy. I apologize, I was, I had an email to send you all the worksheet, and I wanted to check the expenditures, and I did not send that to you like I was supposed to. My apologies. But it is available, if anyone wants to talk to me about it. Our SESC, you got the letter. So the recent violation, we passed the planning part of it, and she had hoped that we were going to be finished at September 30th. It was looking good, till we went out to the sites, and a lot of them, the contractors pulled the erosion controls early. There was dirt in the street, the permit wasn't posted, a lot of things like that, which is all negatives on our end, that we should be inspecting the sites monthly or more, so that that doesn't happen. So I'm going to visit with the team, see how we can increase our inspection rotation, change that. We're already making some changes to paperwork and speaking with the contractors, but, you know, we're making strides, but not to the pace that Eagle would like. So, any questions about any of that?
Did you send, there was an email you sent at 3:41. Is that part of that Trout Unlimited thing, is that in there?
No, that was probably the Eagle.
That was the Eagle.
That was the Eagle one.
That was the Eagle.
Can you send us one about the Trout Unlimited and the Duwajak River?
Just, I can, but 5:30 Dodd Park.
When?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, 5:30 Dodd Park, I will be there.
Cool.
Do you go out to the sites also to check them?
I do occasionally. I do what, with the new, with the changes. I'm doing some more of the initial inspections when needed. And then I do, well, I've done some violation ones. If I see them, I stop and do it. But I don't do a, I'm not in a regular rotation at this point. Maybe that will change. We actually have a goal, well, I shouldn't speak till I talk to the whole team. I have a plan, potential plan, but I better wait.
I'm curious.
Yes.
And I know you said you're, we're working through the plan. We saw the letter from Eagle. In the letter, she's referencing, I think, I don't know if it was Rule 1703 or something like that. She said, you know, inspections at least monthly. I looked at the rule. I don't know where I see monthly inspections. I mean, I certainly understand the need to be able to say that, you know, the sites are up to the standards as needed. But it seemed like that was a bit interesting, that like, where is Eagle's requirement for monthly coming from, because it doesn't seem to be in the rule.
No.
Is that your take as well?
Yeah, and I don't understand it either, because we do, she's referred to the priority. We do have a priority list that we use, and that's been sent to them to show how, when I, when I give a permit out, if there is something that is close to the water, close to property lines, over an acre in size, it gets a priority one. It does have to be inspected more often. And if it's further, you know, it's 200 feet away, and it's not next to property lines, and the soil type is not bad, and, you know, all these different issues, then they become a priority three or four, and they only have to be inspected every three months, or three times in the whole period.
Because it was like beginning, and periodically, as may be needed, and then like the end. And I was like, well, but where is this at least monthly coming from?
So that comes from like, a lot of the normal permits are priority two, and that's a month, it's a monthly inspection. And that is most of them.
Okay. I was just curious.
One more thing, Cory.
And we have to change how we do that.
One more thing, while I was putting that in my calendar, I got a message that the Veterans Administration would like to put that event on the Veterans Facebook page.
Okay.
So if you have a flyer or anything for that, could you send that to Kareem?
I can forward the normal flyer. I don't know if I can make anything specific for it.
Yeah, that's, that's good enough. Send it to Kareem for you. Or if you send it to me, I'll forward it to you.
I'll send it to you.
All right.
Okay.
Good enough. Thank you.
Thanks.
How many sites are you, do you have right now?
We have open between 200 and 300. It's really hard to tell exactly. I have 34 applications right now. They're bringing them in five to 10 a day, right now. And I've had some people pay the, just upfront, pay the late fee, because they don't want to wait for the permit to be issued. We have 156 permits from last year, and they're still, because it's 18-month period, there's still some from the year before. So I know we're over 200 that are out there.
And how many employees do you have?
We have, my full-time inspector, Pat Boyle, a full-time SESC administrator, Tracy, we saw. I work 50% on the plan reviews, and then Kay Preston works 50% of her halftime hours doing some of the paperwork.
And how many hours are you?
I'm four, I'm full-time 40, so it's 20 hours on SESC. So it's 2.75 FTEs that we were able to get to, which was one of the requirements that Eagle had that we met. And she noted that we, we met that, and we just met that this summer.
You should be able to check the sites then.
We should be able to. You're right.
Well, I mean, if you're looking at 2.7 on paper, it's obviously not enough if you've got that many open sites and that many bad marks from Eagle.
Right. Well, and think about it, too, we just got, Tracy just got all our certifications, and we're not doing, we have to update our inspections anyway, but what we were inspecting were things from before. You know, so it's not like all.
You said that your road blew dirt across the street for six days before there's a steel fence up.
But what we're working on right now is not necessarily what we inspected. So she's looking at it, saying, okay, you had four inspections on, over this 18 months, where she wanted more, but we've only begun with this many people. We were one and a half before.
What's the requirement for timeline on grass growing back on those sites?
Well, they have to, within, within five days of a final grade, they're supposed to put down the, the grass, right? This grass seed. And then they have to have full grass establishment before we can close the project. So there's not a specific timeline.
Why are there 18-month open permits? Why are there permits that are open for 18 months?
That's the timeframe of the permit period that's allowed. A project might take a year, a lot of the projects, actually, they're getting a second permit. So they've been taking that long to do some projects. Yeah. The commercial projects are one year. And the latest ones, we're going to be getting another one in right now for something in the MEC Smart Park, and that is, they're getting a two-year permit upfront, because they just know it's going to take longer. So that's going to be about a, between a $5,000 and $6,000 permit. So that'll help us start a new year out.
Can I ask, I know, in the letter, there was some discussion about this. As it pertains to enforcement and compliance, like, is the current setup sufficient to address those things?
I believe it is. We do have work to do to make sure we can change our schedule and get out there more often, do some more communication. And some of the sites were contractors that we felt good about, and then we went out there, and they had the controls gone. I don't understand why. We had one that had the controls up, but not all the way around. And, and our inspector should have caught that earlier and said, hey, this needs to be further around. So there's just some work that we have to do like that.
Thanks, Cory.
You're welcome.
Yep. Sheriff. Have anything for us?
Nothing.
I, I did get with the emergency manager, so please disregard our last conversation. Don't! Madam Treasurer. Madam Clerk. Madam Judge.
No, thank you.
Mr. Drain Commissioner.
Thank you. Evening, board members. Administrator Newton, you bring up a very good point. I totally agree with you. I don't read into the law. Okay? Number two, board members, if you just scroll down to that matrix, not one site passed. It's a little, a little odd, and I'll leave it at that. Good evening, thank you for allowing me to just basically inform you what's going on with your drain office. So I gave you a quick annual report. Obviously, what's going on with the hurricane makes you think of things. This is my recent thing that I've stumbled across. That is a device that can record rainfall, stream flows, et cetera. Baron Lake is going to be our test project, but we can move this thing. It can send alerts. So it's $1,700 shipped, delivered, ready to go. $200 and some dollars a year on the bottom. That would be the screen that anybody could pull up, our emergency management director, et cetera. We can move it around. I've already talked to road commission. So we're going to try it at Baron Lake to, for the gauge the lake level, but I've got a whole lot of ideas on this. But anyway. So I'm here to tell you, your drain office is in good shape. That hurricane, it rained for three days before that happened. Can it happen? Yes. We hope it doesn't. That was 40 trillion gallons of water. That's Lake Tahoe, people. Nobody can plan for that. It will not be, anybody that's traveled there, it will not be the same. So anyway, you have my assessment roles. We're assessing 10 districts this year. Yeah, that, Cory would probably fail me on that one. That wasn't great there, but. So it's an average year. We probably work on two and a half, three times that many, but these are the districts that need the finances shored up. Inter-county drains. We're still being held up by Eagle in St. Joe County on the Cory Lake drain. However, it looks like we're working through that. We finally, in Van Buren County, just went through a public comment period, and it looks like we're going to finally get a permit. Marion County's getting a new drain commissioner. He came and saw me. I decided to meet with him. I also sent him up to meet with Joe Parman in Van Buren County, so this guy can hit the ground running. They've got some challenges, to say the least. But this guy could be good for Marion County. Lake levels, lake love dams, those are county-owned. We got through the inspections. We have two issues, one at Birch, very minor issue to be handled. The other one, McMillan Dam, that's up in Nicholsville, that comes out of Fish Finch Saddle Bag. They're giving it a poor rating due to flow. Not condition, flow. So I have engaged an engineer, and we are working through that. You'll see some photographs, we're doing some work up there. I think the dams are just starting to fall under more and more scrutiny since Midland, et cetera, but nothing to worry about. And on that one, we have an assessment district, so anything we're paying on, we can recover. So no bad news for admin. The Baron Lake well is complete. We build a building, as you'll see in a minute. It's running. We're going to put this device, so everybody can know the lake level. Twin Lakes, thank you for bringing that dumpster in, because guess what? After it left, I had to do some storm cleanup. But luckily, it was minimal, and we had the disposal with the road commission, so thank you. I would have been potentially stuck with a lot more. Our drain funds are in good shape. This is an internal document. Those little red marks meaning we have a deficit. As you can see, we've got two, and maybe three here. And those will go away. You know, we spend money, then we assess, and it's kind of like whack-a-mole. So anyway, our fund balances. So anyway, our fund balances are in good shape. Debt, the only debt we have is Barron Lake and they have already made the first installment on their debt and they pay the freight on that 100%, so we're on track.
Is that the Lake Association or the town?
We have a lake level. And lake level, that one is 100% funded by them. So FEMA open house, I am not happy. I wasn't invited. They didn't know who I was, what I do. And when I read the maps for Antua, Silver Creek, potentially Mason, I don't like what I'm seeing, I don't understand it. I asked for elevations. How are our building inspectors going to, if somebody's in this, they need to know an elevation. Finally, after some double talk, they said, well, you know, that's a GIS function. In comes our GIS Director, Espeland. I said, oh, she's here. She's behind me. I got the guy pulling up things. She's snapping, taking screenshots. Wouldn't give me the elevation. She followed up with them. We think we're getting double talk. So I am not happy. This is going to be about one year before full implementation, but that year's going to go quick. And so I am not aware that FEMA is ever paid a claim in this county. Put it on record, I said it. My site development rules, they're updated, et cetera. I'd like to come back at a later date because that's going to need approval by this board, but they're ready to go. Solar, it's coming people. Jefferson, Howard, and now Marcellus. It's happening. Howard, 2,500 acres. The leases are signed. It's happening.
And Newburgh.
Potentially Newburgh too. Now, I did find out from Mac, can't get around me and can't get around Road Commission. Now, some of these firms we're dealing with, actually Howard, they're meeting their ordinance because the ordinance pretty much worked with them. But other than that, there's not a whole lot I can do. Two years, that project will start in about one year. They're going to get the approvals, I guess, they're going to Howard like next month, but it'll take a whole year for that to get going. So anyway, I have a lot of departments here to help me, but I want to bring out three. First off, the day of the power outage. I reached out to Finance Director Renfro and she came to my office and helped me through BSNA. So she was working during the power outage. GIS Director Espeland, I want to begin to tell you how frustrated I was and what she's following up with FEMA. And she's obviously going to be instrumental in trying to get this hashed out. So a big shout out to her and her recent accolade, she's going to be on the state boards, et cetera. And Leann in equalization, I have to send these roles to her and they have to come back and forth and back and forth. I'm probably going to need to get her Christmas card, maybe a gift card and et cetera. So anyway, a few pictures. So there's our little building. I tried to like make it blend in, see, we're right between houses there at Barron Lake. I don't want it to stick out. And if you can look closely, the neighbor's got a little bench sitting there. She's sitting there reading a book, so I don't want to hear any complaints on noise. Next. That is a waterlogged log I found at El Carte Road there in Antua and go to the next one. We had to pull that out with a side-by-side, it was not easy and that thing weighed like 800 pounds. And if you take a good look at that, that's been cut. That's not storm damage.
No.
But we take care of it. Next. Ah, this is interesting. Guy calls me out at Diamond Lake and says, hey, I got a problem. I got a sinkhole you need to take care of. So on the left, you can see after a little exploratory, well, first you got the Road Commission out there for free, they jetted and said, here's the problem. We start digging, we found that pipe. We were able to go back in the records and find out that house was just built in 19. But we fixed it. However, he's going to have to help pay that bill. Next. This is at McMillan Dam. Left is the starting point and the right is some clearing and things we're doing. So the dam is straight ahead, you really can't see it, but we plucked things out of the plunge pool there and we're clearing the banks, et cetera. Try and make them happy. I don't know what to tell you. Next. There's the pile up at Twin Lakes, but we got it taken care of. So thanks guys for that. That's my well there on the right-hand side. That is a big tree that on Finch Lake, Eagle has said, we want that out of there. And I'm standing, I had to climb down a big old bluff to even snap this picture. I'd have to call in a big crane to even deal with that. Do you guys see that blocking flow in any way or am I somehow missing something? So anyway.
Just a little bit of.
Thank you. Thank you. So anyway, anything else you got? Is that it? Okay, this was out at Smith Lake. That guy holding that is six foot one, he's over 200 pounds. Look at that. That, I hated to relocate that and I'm trying to be diplomatic.
Is that thing alive?
It is not.
No, it's been relocated.
It's been relocated.
All you're saying is if that thing was alive, he's awful tame.
Between, I probably shouldn't have put that in there and my wife said, don't let my daughter.
It's got a dirt den now, not a water.
Anyway, that, that was over $2,000 worth of dam building, et cetera. Luckily, it has an intercounty with Barron's. I called them and I sent them their bills.
Oh, that one's going on the record.
Yep.
I just want to say, I wasn't at the FEMA, I went to the FEMA. I wasn't happy either, so do the best you can.
I will. I absolutely will. This is not over and I may be reaching out to those townships, rallying the troops, et cetera. Well, one other thing I wanted to mention, governmental lake boards. We have Howie, Leyland, and Lee on our governmental lake boards. And guess what? Our governmental lake boards are funded and they're functioning and I'm not aware you three are getting complaints.
Functioning well, they are. Yeah, you're doing good.
Right, we didn't even have to hold a meeting. That was not the case. If we could get Skip and go back in time, things have changed. So anyway, thank you.
Thanks man. Mr. Prosecutor? You got any pictures of Beavers?
I was going to say, I'm not going to be able to top his picture, that last picture, that was pretty impressive, but just not going to spend a lot of time, but just a couple cases. Kind of interesting, the evolution of media. We really don't have a lot of print media anymore and that's how the public used, and the commissioners used a lot of times see, find out about a lot of cases at the prosecutor's office. So just wanted to touch on a couple so that you're aware of what is going on. Obviously, we deal with a wide rainbow of cases for murder, assault, CSC, home invasion, embezzlement, financial crimes, but also drug cases are a significant part of what we do. We're very fortunate in Cass County to have two really quality drug teams to work here. Some people always say, well, why do we need two? It's very important to have two because our local team is invaluable because they do the high-intensity work, they, you know, we need, you know, because there's all sorts of drug activity, you know, at varying levels and they do a lot of that work. They occasionally will get us some of the bigger players too. But we also have in Southwest Michigan, a team called Southwest, the Southwest Michigan Enforcement Team, which is headed by the state police. They cover about 10 counties with two teams. They certainly can't be in Cass County routinely, but they do work here on occasion, usually on a lead for a big case. And we did have two such cases here not too long ago that have now been resolved and I just wanted to report on those very quickly. One of them was a Heath O'Donnell down in the Niles area and he was convicted of possession with intent to deliver less than 445 grams of cocaine, which is a lot of cocaine. He also was involved in, marijuana activity is still illegal if you do it in too great a quantities. He had hundreds of pounds of gummy bears and gummies for, those are usually sold to kids and they're, well, I shouldn't say usually, but they're often found, they're when the kids are very enticing for kids and so forth. He was convicted of both of those counts as well as some gun charges. He was a, he had previously been convicted 20 years ago of federal offenses for, for drug crimes, so he wasn't allowed to have guns. He'll be serving eight years in prison at, at the time of this sentence as part of the agreement. The other one I have touched on before and I just want to conclude it, it was Harold Matthews, I've talked to him before. Again, he was a significant El Carte County drug dealer who decided it would be safer to come up to Cass County to do his drug deal rather than do it down in El Carte County, which was a big mistake because he was found with approximately 1,000 grams of cocaine and he was sentenced the other day to 15 years in prison. So, you know, we're, you know, certainly it's, it's a never-ending battle, but like I said, we're extremely fortunate to have sweat working here as well as our Cass County Drug Enforcement Team. So that's just the update on that and then we will fill you in periodically on other cases as they.
Thousand grams of coke?
Yes.
God!
Kilo, kilo, so that's.
That's a kilo?
Yeah.
That's a brick.
That's a lot.
If I knew what I was talking about.
Right.
Yeah, allegedly. Google, Google told me that's a brick.
Well, Google, Google educated you well, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have new business. M139, 2024.
Mr. Sheriff, I move to approve motion 139, 2024, motion to approve 2024 special assessment role.
Second.
Motion on the floor, support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Have public comment for non-agenda items. Floor is open. Yes ma'am.
Good evening. I just want to take a second to say thank you all for the historic courthouse renovation. We are so excited to move into that facility. I was here, I started working at the county 22 years ago, I'm on my 23rd year now. And I can remember Monica and I, we moved the computers from that historic courthouse to the long courts building all those years ago. But we were lucky enough to work here when everyone was still occupied, they occupied that building and we were in the annex. So Monica, you're more than welcome to help us move all those computers from here back to the historic courthouse because you're, you know, experienced in that.
That's all.
So, the job is open if you'd like it. But it's a great time for Cass County right now and I'm so proud to be an employee and grateful to all of you for this experience, to go through this time of two decades as an employee here and my transformation from working every single position in the IT office to now being the IT Director. It really is a privilege and an honor, so thank you for that. I also really want to thank my employees because they are incredible and what they've done in the past three months is absolutely amazing. Like I don't even know how we did it, to tell you the truth, but we've done projects that pretty much, we should have been focusing on just that one project and there's 10 of them that we've kind of taken on all at once. And we have data connection in the historic courthouse, which was a huge thing because we can actually work in the building now, right? So that's kind of important. But I want to thank my guys, James, Michael, John, and Adam, because they are absolutely like superheroes in my eyes and I can't think of them enough, so. Thank you all.
They told me they're happy because they can see daylight now. Floor is now closed for public comment. One last plug, one other business, order of business.
Mr. Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Motion 140-2024, motion enter a closed session review attorney-client privileged communication pursuant to MCL 15.268H in section 131G of the Freedom of Information Act and to include Clerk Register McMichael, Administrator Newton, Finance Director Renfro, and HR and Payroll Director Daley.
Second.
Motion on the floor, support.[1768.82]